Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. For which stands the question of under God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Minutes for May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four will defer to a later date. We do have minutes for April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Do we have comments? I have a few. You see sticky, yes. Page one. First paragraph, planning board deferred the approval of minutes, November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. It should have the word minutes following. On page three. I have this for discussion, Lord and Enterprises. The spelling of Nick's last name is incorrect. It should be N-R-U-G-N-E-T-T-I. I had a couple of letters reversed. Same way it is on the paragraph down. Seamus got the next one on page four. That was the needed. And then on the last page. The vote by proper motion. As we downed as abstaining, I didn't abstain, I voted aye. And on the last vote. The Slavinsky and Mr. Weir were not here. It was myself and Phil Dropkin that were here. And we were all ayes. Other comments or revisions? Not could I have a motion then to approve the minutes of April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five as modified?
Motion made.
Phil second by? Eric, all in favor, say aye. Against? One abstention. Next item would be the minutes of May first, two thousand twenty-five. Similarly, on that first page. After April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five should be followed with the word minutes. And likewise, on the very last page, last vote. Mr. Paraglia should be off and Neil should be off. And I should be on and Phil should go on. Other revisions, comments? Not could I have a motion then to approve the minutes as modified?
I'll move then.
Phil second by?
I'll second.
Marty, all in favor, say aye. Against? Next item on the agenda is the possible extension or abandonment of applications pursuant to town code. We do have one application despite what's on the agenda. And that's from ABC Orange Incorporated, dated May sixth, two thousand twenty-five, addressed to the planning board chair and planning board members. Regarding Maplewood Village at Goshen subdivision. Dear Chairman and planning board members. The project previously has been reviewed by the board and a conditional preliminary subdivision approval. Major subdivision was acted upon January fifth, two thousand twenty-three. With the resolution granting conditional preliminary approval signed and filed on January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The planning board further extended Maplewood's conditional approval to June sixth, two thousand twenty-five. We are currently diligently addressing the items raised by the planning board in a resolution of conditional preliminary subdivision approval. We want to thank the board for their cooperation and for granting us the approval. And request the board to continue their cooperation by granting us an additional one hundred eighty-eighty-day extension to the conditional preliminary subdivision approval, signed Dan Gurlin, President. Kelly?
And that would be, as they are working on everything, I did get their legal documents from their attorney. That would be bringing it to your December fourth, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
Comments or concerns from the board? Could I have a motion then? To extend their conditional approval, preliminary approval to December fourth, two thousand twenty-five? Seamus, second by? Diana, all in favor, say aye. Against? Next item on the agenda, Student Bus Company Incorporated, twenty-two, six, and seven. We have an application for site plan approval and lot line adjustment for a bus terminal on three point four, plus or minus acres long. Industrial Drive and a CO zone, AQ three overlay. And we're here tonight to consider a draft negative declaration or possible draft resolution. Kelly?
Yes, can I just ask, so seventeen M Flex was on for a public hearing?
Oh, yes.
We jumped over that, it is being adjourned, but we should motion to open it and a motion to adjourn it to two nineteen.
Sorry.
You can, well.
Okay, we have a public hearing scheduled for seventeen M Flex building. Twelve dash two dash forty-three. Application for a site plan and special permit approval for warehouse. And office on eight point nine plus or minus acres along New York State Route seventeen M. Cannon Hill Drive and I Zone. AQ three floodplain and ponding street corridor and water supply water check overlays. Okay, so we're gonna open the public hearing. Any motion? Diana, second by Phil. All in favor, say aye. And could I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to?
June nineteenth.
June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Eric, second by? Seamus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, it is adjourned. Now we're back to Student Bus.
Yes, no need to.
We're here to discuss a draft resolution and a draft neg deck.
So I prepared for the board a draft, we'll start with the draft neg deck. A draft negative declaration. I don't have any potential redline modifications, I've always mentioned. I don't know if the board has any questions or anything that you would like to discuss on the negative declaration.
I think you do have a question. See, on the second page. The impact of transportation. They're proposing to contribute twenty-five thousand dollars to the town.
Yes.
To commence a study. Problematic intersection.
Yes.
Can you speak to that a little bit? I haven't, maybe I missed some pages.
They're going to, it's sort of like along seventeen M where there was a discussion about a fair share contribution to any upgrades that were needed to seventeen M. This is really the first time something like this has happened over by Industrial Drive and seventeen A. So the thought was that there's going to need to be a study to see if a left turn really lane over there, or what did I put? The possibility of constructing a left turn lane and commencing preliminary design, installing a dynamic speed feedback sign to reduce speeds, things like that, so they were offering to contribute twenty-five thousand dollars to the town to start that. And they would have to, in the resolution, I put prior to the issuance of a CO, they would have to enter a developer's agreement with the town to do that.
That would be in a developer's agreement.
That would be in a developer's.
Now, would that obligate the town to spend money?
It would not obligate the town to spend money, but this money would be there to begin the process.
Thank you.
So so with respect to the admonition maybe to their drivers that they will not make the left turn in a bus onto industrial, I know you've written it more specifically in set out sort of a more aggressive rule, fortunately, that's correct. In the resolution, so the fact that it's a little lighter than that deck doesn't mean that we don't take it as seriously.
That's correct, but if you'd like it to be the identical language, I can put that they, that they shall act to.
Take steps.
That they shall direct its bus drivers to approach Industrial Drive from the north. I can use that language in the neg deck, if the board find that more appropriate. The way I put it in the neg deck said that the applicant was willing to limit its impact on the left turn movement by directing its bus drivers to approach Industrial Drive from the north. Thereby not adding bus traffic to the northbound left turn movement. In the neg deck, I was putting it more that they were offering this and you weren't requiring it. Therefore, you weren't requiring it as a mitigation measure, they were offering it as a mitigation measure. And then you were in your resolution requiring that as a condition.
And I guess, just, and I don't know that maybe other people have an idea about it. Handle this, you know, as when we ended the last meeting that they were at. We created this construct where they might go north by Derland or by Quomop or whatever, kind of come around. But we didn't really analyze that. And I think, we think that it's probably not an issue. And I wonder if like, I wonder how to get past, like, we haven't we haven't quantitatively figured out what that impact is gonna be.
I suspect it's just the traffic flow, it's more frequency of buses. They're not all coming in at once or leaving at once. So it's gonna be more intermittent as they're coming through those side roads, I think that's what we presume.
Right, okay, so it's our judgment sort of based on what we know.
And what's been represented as far as the standard buses coming in and buses going out.
Okay.
And I guess the buses that are gonna take that route are only the buses that are coming from the village of Florida. The other buses would already be coming
From Goshen.
From Goshen or Chester. In that direction. And I don't know what the breakdown is, us to Florida.
Yeah, that was discussed the last meeting.
It was a guess. It was a guess, but.
Well, we're sending out the copy of the notice. Should a copy of the notice go to the state DOT as well? Or is it seventeen?
Oh, well, they actually weren't an involved agency because they were.
I'm referencing them and the possibility of improvements on their road.
I can send them a copy of it.
Should they get, I don't know.
Well, they're not a permitting agency at this point. So I think when we asked the, the town board. I think that's where the notice to the DOT would really come in. If the planning board wants this to be sent to them, I think they might just be a little confused because they weren't noticed in the beginning.
I just didn't know if it was our requisite. Okay. Other comments from the board? Not, could I have a motion then to approve the neg deck as revised this evening?
Wait, you didn't revise that?
I thought you changed the wording.
I asked if you wanted that changed and the board said you were okay with how it was. But if you want it changed, I certainly can.
No.
Okay.
If that was a consensus not to, okay, could I, well, revise that? We have that flexibility. Could I have a motion then to approve the neg deck as prepared?
I'll make the motion.
Marty, second by? Seamus, all in favor, say aye.
Okay, so next I prepared for you a draft resolution, I do have a couple of amendments to this, so can we go through it? Let me know if anyone else has any changes, I see them posted. So on page three, the bold italics for the negative declaration will no longer be bold italics.
Can we go back to page two?
Yes.
Well, I was actually gonna go to item four.
Okay, you go to four, I'll go to that.
Site inspection authorization dated November fourteenth.
There was one that was on, that wasn't filled out and there was another.
Did you have that one company that we saw?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't have that one.
I decided to leave off the one that was blank and then put in just the one that was.
I took care of that. Number nine, Phil.
Number nine should be, should read Student Bus Company Inc.
Any on page three?
Number eighteen.
Okay.
Let's follow the words last.
Oh, last. Just saw it, alright. Okay, I have no changes on page four.
Four should likewise in the now therefore paragraph. Third line down. Correct student.
Student Bus Company, wow, I really just want to change their business name.
You do?
I do. I'm gonna have to do a segment of this whole thing and see if I missed it again. Okay, so then in specific condition number four.
I'm sorry, what page do I, page six?
Page six?
Yep.
I'm on page five. My paragraph two. Prior to the issuance of a COO compliance. The application letter into a developer's agreements with I have suggested into a reasonable satisfaction of the town. Then going down from there, one to four lines. This money can be used. That's first time money is referenced in the document. And should be some context to that.
Can we go back up to, you want, the applicant shall enter into a developer's agreement?
With and to the reasonable satisfaction of the town.
Of the town of Goshen, okay, and okay, I will fix the, this money.
Now, yeah, that's twenty-five thousand.
Right. I was purposely not referencing that here. So I'll have to tweak the wording of this line. Okay, so specific condition number four. The applicant, normally what the board does is it asks if there's any problems with gravel. It asks immediately for it to be paved, the applicant just asks for a chance to rectify a situation before it immediately be paved. So the proposed condition would be, the proposed parking areas shall be gravel as shown on the plan unless the building inspector determines the gravel surfaces or the existing pavement surfaces create unanticipated nuisance conditions, dust, ponding, excessive maintenance, et cetera. At which time, the applicant will be required to address and correct such condition to the satisfaction of the building inspector. If such condition cannot be corrected, the applicant shall pave or repave and strike these areas to the satisfaction of the town engineer and building inspector. Right.
I'm sorry.
Could I go back to?
Yes.
Can we, it's okay with the applicant. Can we, at the second to last line or under other signage for studies? I realize twenty-five thousand might be a guess very far, but to the extent that we've like opened the aperture to other traffic dynamics by virtue of this weird security thing, like, I'd like to be able to use that.
Yeah, I think it doesn't limit it to just being used to this, but I'd like to broad, I think it would be appropriate to broaden it for that's one. That language though is specifically included in the negative declaration. So she wanted to be modified in the negative declaration as well? I mean, we could have a.
If you think it's understood, then it's fine.
I don't think it's.
We could have a motion to approve the negative declaration as modified by Marty, seconded by Seamus, if you wanted that to be amended.
Are you okay with that?
Why, why to be consistent?
Share?
Marty and Seamus, you want that to be modified?
I don't have a problem with it.
Do you want to change your motion and change your second? No, Seamus is shaking his head now.
You agree with it?
Oh, okay. So no, yes. Okay. Duly noted for Grace's minutes.
I'm sorry, thank you.
As amended, hold on. So I just now wrote that for myself, so I shouldn't change it. Okay, so then down to five, which was the drip pan.
I have a question on that one.
Okay, good, because I actually struck it entirely and changed it entirely.
That could be a problem, okay.
Okay.
Now, the question I had was, we're saying drip pans shall be placed under every bus immediately upon arrival. And I'm looking at saying, does that mean there's gonna be sixty different drip pans? And how long do they sit there under the buses? And who's putting them under the buses, is it the bus driver? Whether a person on site every time a bus comes in and then when they pull out and take it away or sort of sitting on, it seemed a little clumsy.
Well, that is a condition that you've used previously on applications with buses, but apparently the DOT does have certain requirements now. So the applicant made us aware of that today. So the revised condition would be, if the board would like it. In accordance with New York State Department of Transportation requirements, an inspection shall be performed of each vehicle upon exiting the applicant's lot, as well as when it returns to the parking lot slash property. If any leaks are detected, a drip pan shall be placed under the leaking area temporarily to prevent contamination of the ground. The vehicle shall then be brought in for repair and a spill kit used to treat any area that could potentially have been affected.
So if they put this drip pan underneath, because it's dripping when it comes in. Put a drip pan underneath, that bus is now out of commission until they bring it into the shop to fix it, is that what we're saying?
I would prefer.
It's a, it's an out of service level defect through FMCSA, so it's legally obligated to be out of service.
I didn't either, I didn't know that the DOT had these regulations.
Those are hands would be a problem, which is not.
Yeah. It did seem a little, little clumsy once, so. And then I'm just gonna.
Can I have a question? The applicant has to inspect these, right?
Yes.
Is there a log, a required log at the state DOT or is there any kind of?
How does that look?
Yeah, it's called a DVIR, it's all, it's actually all CDL drivers, semi, same thing. But it's actually a book just like this and every trip they check through no leaks. No funny noises, no broken items, the mirror is on there, sign off, so it's every day, it lives with the bus, so guess after every trip.
So then I'm gonna just skip over the two in bold italics for a second. And there is a potentially new condition that the applicant doesn't know about yet.
Can we go back to number nine?
Yes.
Says that show you no washing of buses or vehicles on site. Did I hear one of the meetings that there might possibly be a move? That would come on site to do the bus.
There is a service we've used in the past that has biodegradable, all those kinds of products that are safe and non-contaminant.
So that would be a conflict with the wording on this. Unless they're doing it in a bubble or some sort of shrouded.
Not yet.
Is using onsite water?
I think it's more the issue of not using a well water, it sounds like well water. You know, that wasn't part of the evaluation, the assessment on the well for the open water well.
That company used their own water?
Yeah, they usually truck it in.
And they collected it?
No, the, what we've, not an expert on you know, all the technicalities, contamination laws, but what we, the company we've used says it's all biodegradable or I don't know the terminology, but safe products that won't harm the groundwater or soil or anything like that, so they wash it straight down.
The chemicals they use, which is.
Yes.
The soap, I guess.
You first.
Okay, the use of the onsite well for the washing of buses or other vehicles onsite shall be prohibited. Yeah, I don't like onsite, okay. The use of the onsite well for the washing of buses or other vehicles shall. Okay, so potential new condition. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall perform a site distance analysis at the intersection of Derland Road and Florida Road. And the applicant shall perform any vegetative pruning that can be performed to increase visibility subject to New York State Department of Transportation. And that was just, we were talking about rerouting those buses and inching out so they have better visibility. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy slash compliance. The applicant shall perform a site distance analysis at the intersection of Derland Road and Florida Road. And the applicant shall perform any vegetative pruning that can be performed, that can be performed to increase visibility subject to New York State DOT. So if the DOT says no?
That's it, it's not their property as far as pruning.
Yeah, it, well, it may be in their right of way.
DOT Y, okay.
Okay, so there were two potential conditions. The first was, did you want to include a condition about the applicant getting an easement from the county? There was that little piece where the yes, providing the county an easement, thank you. There's where it comes on to their property. They, the applicant did say that they're in communications directly with the county already. You don't need to have it as a condition of your resolution, but I know it was discussed, that's why I put potential condition.
Okay, refresh my recollection, but the purpose for that would be. Okay, refresh my recollection, but the purpose for that would be?
Um, let me pull up.
For the water main?
Yeah.
Water main.
Yeah.
County's water main crosses the applicant's property, it's not what I need.
I can actually, um, provide more current information on that, if you guys want it, um. So, I had been in contact with the, the county surveyor, um, who had really had no knowledge of an easement over that water line. He's aware of the water line, but he, just in, he's been with the county for fifteen, twenty years, he's never seen an easement before or anything like that. Um, but this week I started reaching out to other people in the county, and I had like three or four people looking into it. So it turns out, there is an easement over top of that main. It was, uh, created and filed in eighteen ninety-eight.
That's awesome.
And it's, you know, whatever the property was worth at that time, maybe like three or four properties, huge farm pieces, um, they're laid out and they're on, they're in, they're in the county court's office, but, um, you know, because it's a hundred twenty-five years old, it's hard to know exactly, if they're not delineated by beats and bounds or distances or anything like that, it just recognizes that there's a six-inch water line that went through these, these large pieces of land, um.
When was that water line put in?
Excuse me?
When was the water line put in?
I think it was around that time.
It is that old?
I, I get, I never, I've never heard of water main that old, but that's when the eas, that's when the easements were created, so I suppose that's when it went out. Um, and it gives the, the county maintenance and access abilities, um, but obviously over, over that duration of time, the lands have been subbed by, subbed by it over and over again, you know, so.
So they, do they even still use it? I mean, this is going to be one of those easements where it literally says, next to the pile of chain by Bobby's Cherry Tree, it's like, awesome.
It's not even that, it's not even that. It's, it's just very general, you know, it's very, uh, broad. So there is something that exists, it's extremely old.
The main itself was for the facility that's no longer functioning, right?
Well, the water line, uh, goes to Valley View, which is a, I think, assistance care facility, and it had a, a, a use decades and decades ago, so it wasn't bad. I don't know what it was, maybe psychiatric or something, I'm not sure.
Do they?
I mean, we would, obviously the county had, and we would work out and provide the county the access it needs to repair it.
Maybe some sort of, don't you just go on the plan? You reference it?
I mean, I think there, isn't, isn't that one? There's those, I mean, there's a, it says fifty-foot utility easement, so.
There, there are reasons in the property, but, um, the, the, the plan shows the water main crossing the property, but it shows, it shows no easement.
Uh, yeah, approximately.
Right, well, that's why the question was first thought of there, so, you know, there should be some sort of reference, you know, either whose water main it is, water line, or, you know, that there is an easement, even if it's not defined by beats and bounds.
That, that's easy enough to identify it on the plan as the county water main, uh, the, the more difficult question to put forward right now is what you want to require the applicant to go to the county, uh, to, to get an easement, or to ask the county if they want an easement, um, so, you, you can really just kind of, uh, say hunt a little bit, and just say that applicant's required then, whatever, and then it gives approval to, uh, you know, contact the county to see whether they want an easement, and that's up to the county to, you know, do what they do.
That would be inappropriate, then, contacting the county, supposed to getting it.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think we have already contacted the county, so they, you know, they're aware of it, and they want it, I mean, rather have them have an easement so they know where they can go and work, than to say, we'll go wherever the heck we want.
And you'll work with them if in fact they do, with the?
Yeah, yeah, I would. Where the water line is located, all we have to do, with buses, you know, it's not a building over there, any structures, or any big new, you put theirs.
Yeah, it's not uncommon, they, it's, applicants will offer an easement, they provide all the documentation, if the county utilizes that to take it through, legislature, executives, and filing, it's, it's a common process, so, I don't, I don't think you guys have any issue, just putting together that information if the county wanted it?
Yeah, we should.
It would be C.
Well, the county could get the information as far as something, since they're water line.
Right, if the county wanted it, they've done that too, if the county wanted it, they connection for the document.
We'll, we'll just let them know if they're.
Don't you think you did the good faith?
It's here, and you, you want it, you want it.
Right, you can have, you can have next year if they had attorneys on staff.
And just to refresh the board's memory, the applicant has designed the site to avoid the water main, uh, you know, I, I don't think you have within twenty, I can see the water main, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, there's not, yeah, there's nothing in some place over top of the water main, it would prevent the county from going in there, if they had to, service the line or whatever. Um, they have to park a lot in the back, but it's not on the water main.
So will we require just letters to the county from them?
I think Kelly's gonna answer that question in just a second.
Okay.
I was trying to make some more time for her.
Well, this is so far, what I've got is, within ninety days from the date of this resolution, the applicant shall contact the Orange County Attorney's Office to determine whether Orange County desires an easement over the existing water line traversing the applicant's property. If the county does want such an easement, the applicant shall work to provide such an easement and provide proof of such filing of an easement to the Orange County Clerk's Office, per, uh, proof of such filing of an easement with the Orange County Clerk's Office to the Building Department, but they have to provide proof of.
Prefer that we would cooperate with the county, and with the county, repair and file.
Is it a, is it a phone call or a letter?
So the way this would happen, um, if you don't make any further changes to that, when the applicant's plan for a weak line, I require that they provide some form of proof that they've had some discussions with the county, a letter would be preferred, or in an email or something like that, or a social place.
Could this be a document?
Yes, that's right.
Then the county can decide.
Yeah, and to make sure that they satisfy the condition, and will approve if the condition is satisfied.
Shall cooperate to establish such an easement. Better than?
Perfect.
And I didn't change the first part, so Sean can. That was plenty of time. Okay, so the next one was a potential condition, um, there had been discussion of potential containment for the fuel tank to protect it from leaks, but then the applicant said that they actually did say that they were providing a concrete pad under where they fill the buses.
The tanks themselves were put in double containment, the double wall tanks?
Yeah.
So that is the protection.
Yeah.
Okay, so then do I even need a condition?
Well, it, it depends, this is the other condition, there, there's two parts to this, the, the one is the fuel tank leaking, which I think they're gonna satisfy, they may not probably alarm, and then second is whether this board wants, uh, a pad on the surface for refueling.
That's what they said they were putting in?
Yeah.
That, yes, that's what they were.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're proposing a concrete pad at the fueling location.
But it is a chill on a plant.
Uh, showing the last one, not, not the one the board has seen, yeah, so you can make a condition, right, that makes sense.
Did the board follow that, there was a little, okay.
And the alarm, is it, uh?
It's interstitial spaces, it's, no, not a rupture, it's whether there's liquid in the interstitial spaces.
Between, between the tools.
Good idea, it's the second that you want to play.
Sean, what, what, what did we, or where did we leave the matter of that, what was raised by John Kenny about creating five additional parking spaces when relocating the short busses?
Yeah, uh, it has, it's not on the plan, uh, that you're conditionally permitting tonight, and if you'd like it to be approved, then, um, then there should be a condition on there as such, but I think where we left off, John sent to the applicant, uh, the sketch, uh, what he was describing to you, I don't know if you've had a chance to review that, and whether you want to make that.
I mean, the, the way we, I think, I think what, I, I think my interpretation, what John Kenny was saying was that if we were relocate the bus, the short busses that were shown in the pack out of that area, then that area could be consolidated down a little bit, um, and made smaller, to reduce impact. That was the way I interpreted it, um, so.
I thought he was trying to make, like, I remember him saying, I think you can get more parking spaces on there.
Keep it like it is, but you can have more parking.
Yeah, which I don't think is a necessity for us at this point.
And I think it'd be the type of thing where, like, if, if, and during operation, if they decided to instead put those short busses in the back and would go up front, then yeah, that, that could be, there could be more employee parking in the back, it's, they can't.
I disagree with that, no, you're, you're required to park where you're showing the plan, so, you're required to park where you're showing the plan, so let's just say, on the applicant's own, they decided to reconfigure, you know, use the same parking space, but move things around, and it's not consistent with what.
So if we show, let's say we show, I don't know, there's eight spaces, but they're parking twelve cars in the back, that's like a system of the site plan?
I would say so, it would come up to building inspector's determination, but yeah, I think it is.
Um, I mean, I, you.
I think it's okay as this.
The applicant's okay with this, it's a polite word, yes.
So I moved that potential condition up to a new one F, so that prior to the signing of the plan, the applicant shall revise the plan to have a concrete pad under where the buses will be fueled. And that's all the changes that I had.
Now, just on that, moving into vegetation, I don't see, that was the, the brand new one, and it's not a problem.
Yeah. And that's, again, that's only if the DOT says it's okay in the right way, or if it's necessary after the.
That was at an intersection, uh.
Derland Road.
Um.
Seventy A.
Because of the, the routing of the buses.
You're routing buses through there, yeah, and, and obviously if that intersection is not studied, right, because that was something that was discussed.
So look at it, and if there's any kind of vegetative clearing that could be done to help site distance, we'll reach out to the DOT and see if we can have that done.
Okay.
Do you understand that?
Yes, just not having seen the language, is it conditioned on our reaching out to the DOT and committing to doing it, uh, if it moves forward, or do we?
It's actually going out there and doing the site, uh, distance evaluation to determine if there is mitigation required.
So would a.
Then you would reach out to the DOT to see if you could actually do the clearing to accommodate that meeting.
Understood, so the, a CO wouldn't be predicated on getting through the DOT and having it pruned, it's just that we're going through the process.
Going through the process, going through doing the, uh, site assessment. Because you have no control over what the DOT gives you authorization to, clear cut, you know, to get that site distance, but you do have the ability to take the, to do the study.
Leah, I just have a question, um, the, the potable water coming from the well and number of employees, that, that trigger for camp, public water supply with the county, has that been discussed?
That has been, there will be a public water supply, it's gonna be a non-transient, non-commune water supply.
Okay.
Um, and they are in the process, I don't, they haven't done it yet, as far as relocating the well.
I was gonna leave you with that on the way out, they started today, so pray for, uh, order tomorrow.
They relocated from the side well, abandoning that one, and then relocating it to the rear of the property.
Okay, thank you.
The county did give a year.
Right.
To actually work with.
The transition.
The coolest report.
Right, you wouldn't be using the existing well for that purpose during that duration.
Okay, thank you.
Does, any other questions from the board or concerns? If not, could I have a motion then to approve the amended resolution of conditional approval, lot line adjustment, major site plan for Student Bus Company Incorporated, uh, as modified this evening?
I'll place a motion.
Diana, second Diana?
I'll second.
Uh, Marty, all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Against?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, one fourteen, Hartley Road Battery Energy Storage Site, twelve dash one dash two point three, an application for amended site plan approval and special permit for tier-two battery energy storage system on thirty-one point two plus or minus acres along Hartley Road, in a CO zone, the NQ six floodplain upon the street corridor, a water supply, watershed, and battery energy storage overlay districts. And we're here tonight to talk about revised plans.
Uh, hi, uh, thank you, yeah, in addition to the revised plans conversation.
Yes, for the record.
I'm recusing myself.
Neil, if you can come up.
He is welcome. So I was gonna say, um, in addition to the, the discussion of the revised plans, there was a request at the last meeting that we have a, a conversation discussion, experts, yes.
Yep.
So we actually have two experts that, uh, in addition to, um, well, a lot of experts, so, um, so, uh, we have from, uh, from New Leaf Energy, our, um, um, Michael Conway, who's our, um, senior director of, um, and business lead on, on energy storage for, for New Leaf, for the, for our company, has a, a technical background. And we also have, um, Paul Rogers, who's, um, formerly with the, the head of hazards materials with the FDNY, and now, um, co-founder of a group called Energy Response Safety Group, um, which is the, I think, the leading, um, safety, fire safety, um, consulting, uh, engineering consulting group in the country, and so they're working with us, uh, and have also worked on the, uh, the, the changes that are happening to the fire code connected to these, so, um, we can, um, have them, um, present, present a little bit, or answer questions, but I think maybe to begin with, you can start, uh, just describe some of the changes, is that appropriate?
Yeah, again, Travis from Creek, man, good to see everybody again, thanks for the opportunity, just to give a quick update, uh, there's really, uh, plan-wise, there's not really much that has changed, we, we are receipt of the most recent TDE review letter number two, there's nothing substantial in there that we, we have, uh, issues with, uh, there's several comments in there that we're prepared to move forward and address, um, one of those, just, just.
The left panel, could you just rotate it this way?
Yeah.
Perfect, so we, I can see it as well.
Okay. So I was trying to get the videographer, uh, so.
The board sees first.
Yeah, actually, these are both the same, is it all right if I just do that?
That would be nice.
And then this one is for the, for the TV audience? All right, there we go. Um.
Action.
I'll, I'll go this way. So, uh, several comments that we're prepared to address, we'll just, we'll talk about the well, we, we are coordinating with the landowner to, uh, identify a potential location for, for a second well, and we will proceed through Orange County Department of Health requirements and the various testing and full drawdowns and things like that, so that is actively going on behind the scenes, uh, so that update is not indicated on these plans, but we're, we're well aware of that, that procedure. Um, there's some other coordination going on behind the scenes, again, with, uh, ONR as far as the location of the poles, and then, uh, we have some little bit of homework to do as far as, uh, providing an updated fire turning template, uh, that will be, uh, showing the, the largest apparatus that the town, uh, the, the fire department currently uses.
As far as you know at this point, does ONR still require the twelve poles?
As far as we know at this point, yeah, we're pending the receipt of the full study from that.
Correct. Uh, so we have a little bit of homework here to do for, uh, the, the turning template, for the fire apparatus, uh, in addition to that, the applicant is coordinating behind the scenes with, with Chuck to try to nail down some times to meet with, with various chiefs, and that's been kind of a, an elusive, uh, schedule, so, uh, but that, that is, that is occurring, um. There, there will be some also, some discussion with the fire department as far as the, the, uh, the tanks and, and the storage, so we're, we're prepared to move forward and get, get you updated comments when, when, or an updated response when those comments are addressed, likely in the next, next submission. Uh, as far as internal storage, we, we did discuss with, we did present to the town board, gave them an update, and, uh, they're requesting that we proceed further into the planning board and the ZBA, uh, with the application to get them some additional information. I mentioned the ZBA, uh, that's gonna be a, a little transition into the next section, uh, we are going to be moving forward with a subdivision plan to form the two lots, uh, these are just lots that will accommodate the, the one acre minimum, and there'll be some various, various, there'll be several variances included in that application, that forthcoming application. So that is something that you have not seen yet, uh, but we'll. So that is something that you have not seen yet, uh, but will later on in the discussion, we're going to look for some, uh, procedural, procedural guidance on, uh, setting that path for us.
So it's gonna be five megawatts on each lot, is that correct?
Correct. Correct. And that, and that's O N R's requirement, I mean, the Kelly and, and Alex discussed that as a requirement of O N R to have a tax map parcel number.
Would you expect to the, uh, the equipment detail, which you added, which was great?
But it was empty. The site sheet was, it, it did not plot for your particular copy, so that's a comment that Sean brought up.
Oh, well, I, maybe I'm, I'm thinking about something.
Maybe I'm thinking something different, sorry.
But, um, the, the, there are multiple battery containers, which is I guess what we're involving in that.
Correct.
Uh, I, I thought that based on the spec sheet that you gave us the first time you were here, like, the containers were five megawatt containers. Uh, is, is that the only, you only have, if, if the containers are five megawatts, you only have one on each pad, correct?
I'm gonna defer to.
Sure.
The expert. Hi, everybody, thanks for having me today, Mike Conway. The, each container is, um, about five megawatt hours, which I, I know the town has done a lot of solar, so is familiar with using the megawatt as the delineation. When we step into the energy world, when energy storage world, we start talking about like the capacity of energy as how many megawatts you can push over how much time. Um, so when we talk about that, a lot of times we use two terms, we use the term for the power, which is the megawatts, and then the term for, uh, the watt hours, which is the amount of energy. So we have five megawatt hours within each container. They, each container is supposed to have about a four hour runtime. So if you take that five and divide it by four, each container is about one point two megawatts. So we'll have.
Is, is the five megawatts that we're talking about that the state is sort of requiring or limiting?
Is that, is that five megawatt like throughput, or is it five megawatt hour storage?
They determine a power level, that's the maximum you could be to participate in this program, and that's five megawatts.
Got it, okay.
They, they don't say, hey, you can only, you can only discharge for two hours, or we want you to discharge for eight hours, which would determine the watt hours, which would tag on that last letter there, determining megawatt hours in the system.
Got it. So, so the amount of storage may be significantly more than five megawatt hours?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was my misunderstanding.
Yeah, our proposal that each of these will be five megawatts of power and twenty megawatts, megawatt hours of, of energy. So a five megawatt, um, power level that can be held for four hour duration.
That is all.
Thanks, Eric.
Let me just, a seminal question for me is, uh, in one of the items, you say that the operating system is not yet known. Does that mean the manufacturer, what, what exactly does that mean?
The, the operating system, yes, correct. The manufacturer has not been determined yet. There's a, an, a little bit of unknown with all of the tariffs and the fluctuation on that. Uh, the previous, the previous system identified in the application that, I'm gonna butcher this, Pythium?
I'm sorry.
Pythium, uh, at the town board meeting, they indicated that that, that unit will not be allowed. So that's why we're leaving that undetermined at the moment.
So, that does not affect, the fact that the operating system is presently unknown, does not affect any of the discussions we're having tonight? Fire suppression or whatever?
Correct, yes, and, and, and Mr. Rogers will be prepared to, to give a, a summary of what the, those requirements are. There's, every unit is, and maybe I should save that for you, but every unit is qualified, regulated underneath these specific regulations. Whether it's from Canada, whether it's from China, you can't bring these units in unless they meet these particular requirements.
And these requirements, are these state, federal, uh, county?
Yeah, I'm gonna defer.
Right, right out of the state, the state.
State.
Yeah, part of the fire code.
Fire code, okay.
Yep, okay.
Ask a question?
Sure.
Um, so, at some point tonight, it would be helpful for me to get some, some more color from the board about, um, where the guardrails lie on, on vendors, if the, the town has some sensitivity to that. To help, to, to help us pick a product to use on, on this project. Um, so we could kick that to the end of the presentation, but it'd be helpful for us if we're not, you know, flying blind on.
We don't, it's all, don't use P F O S or anything like that, but the ten, this planning board doesn't weigh in on vendors or anything like that.
Certain vendors.
Um, I, I, what about country of origin, like, how far can we go?
This board wouldn't weigh in on that.
They'll be town board, town board.
Mm-hmm.
Clearly something we would be interested in is if you come to us and say, we think this is the safest system for X, Y, Z reasons. Uh, we would be interested in knowing that, because public health, safety and welfare is involved with everything that we did.
So really, that's, as far as the site perspective, that's what, uh, we have, we, we are prepared to submit updated site plans and a response to Mr. Hoffman's most recent letter for May twen, I'm getting the dates, May twenty eighth, to be placed on the June, the mid-June, the second meeting in June. So that's just our little roadmap.
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth, there you go. So that's just our, our roadmap, tentative roadmap. And that will include updated plans, the zoning board application, and also a updated subdivision plan. So if there's no more questions about this, I think I'd like to turn it over to.
Did you have anything, Sean?
Yeah, just a couple of things, if that's a fair assumption.
Before we switch.
Yeah.
So. So, uh, the applicant acknowledged receipt of my comments, and they actually addressed a couple of things that I was gonna discuss tonight, so I'm not gonna rush through those. But just so the board, uh, board has a big clear understanding of where we're aligned with this. At your April seventeenth meeting, you do declare your intent to be media agency and classify this as an unlisted seeker act, right? Thirty days have not elapsed, although at the five, eight, or May eighth meeting, town board meeting, the town board did consent to you. But because the thirty days hasn't elapsed, you can't take any action. The applicant's acknowledged that, it's just, you know, I think, just, I know you're always looking for what action you're gonna take, but tonight there's no action, just a presentation by the applicant and any questions you have. Um, there are a lot of items, uh, still pending, so my report, as you saw, carry over a lot of comments. Uh, the applicant touched on the subdivision well. Uh, I just wanna clarify, yeah, uh, the green space.
Yep.
Uh, the green space is not purvis surface covered, there is a dimensional regulation that pertains, and I know it's seventy percent purvis and thirty percent green space. And I think that is probably intentional, but the green space is different, and if you look on the previously approved site plan, you'll see the areas that were green space. If you're gonna approach in any of those areas, then you have to reallocate green space somewhere else on site. What somewhat goes hand in hand with that is the outdoor storage. When the applicant was asked before you, uh, for the existing contract, you used, you, uh, agreed to twenty-nine to twenty-three percent of the site could be used for outdoor storage. They're currently taking some of that area that you approved, now allocating it to the battery. So if the applicant, or the owner, needs that area, that should be shown on this plan. If they don't need that area, then I think it would be appropriate for you then to reduce that area proportionally, um, and the applicant will speak with the site owner for that. Uh, they touched on the, uh, apparatus and the turning plan, and the last thing I have is just, um, the plan currently shows fuel storage and, uh, natural gas fuel tank. Um, fairly close battery energy storage system. Uh, the applicant said that they had no intention of, um, moving that at this time, I just wanted to point that out to the board, make sure you don't wanna discuss.
That's something that should come up with the conversations with the fire chief too, right?
I would hope so.
Correct, yes.
That's all I have, is, were there any questions?
Not at this time?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to your.
So you wanna move on to the presentation, or do you have clarification from, for Alex from the Z B A and how he wants procedurally to set that path over, are you okay?
Um, just super quick, I guess this is a question for Kelly. Um, we know the variances that we need, we just wanted to make sure, we made the referral from the planning board or anything about you.
Okay.
All right.
Anytime you're ready.
So I think I, yeah, I think we're gonna target probably the June third submission deadline, so hopefully we'll be in front of the Z B A that Tuesday, and then back for you, please.
Is it a quick lawyer, Stephen?
Yeah, only engineers did that, right?
World be a better place.
Could I just ask what variance you, you look at?
Uh, sure. So. The, that's right, setup. Yeah, so the variances that we've identified, um, are internal side yard setback variances, because we're too close to this line. And then, I guess this is subject a little bit to maybe building department confirmation, um, but we also think we might need a front yard variance, because the street line's down here, of course, there's an intervening parcel, but if you're counting this as a front lot line, um, we would still need a setback from that requirement. And then also road frontage variances, because there's no road frontage for each site. So it's six total, um, but we're still, importantly, I think, maintaining compliance with the battery energy storage code requirement, that there be a hundred foot setback from the system in any property line that's zone residential, because that's this line up here.
Well, yes, a very basic question. Where is the energy coming from, your story?
It's from the, really from the grid.
Yeah.
You're, you're balancing your peaks and valleys, so anything that's above what you're able to produce gets stored in here, it's kind of like a capacitor, it's a normal battery, and when the demand's needed, it's pulled back out of the system, how'd I do?
It's pretty good.
B, B plus? But it's, I think, we cou- covered on an earlier, in an earlier presentation, that that charging is occurring at night, when you're not, you don't have the, the tax on the system itself. You know, during the day, we're running air, air conditioning and everything else, just as a society, but at night, it's a little bit less of a draw, so anything is being directed to the battery storage.
And then when the energy is released?
It was back into grid.
Go back, if it goes back into the grid, and you're selling it a certain price to the utility, is that it?
That's correct.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
When you mention as far as the variances, was there any issue with the hundred foot setback to residential, as far as a wooded buffer?
I'm gonna look back to this one, so we, that's to there. We did discuss with the town board, I don't, they did not give us an actual, uh, indication or, uh, decision, because they wanted to see this process a little bit more completed.
You discussed a setback from a wooded buffer with the town board?
Actually, I think that's correct.
Yeah, we were asked to discuss that in the first T V letter, we were recommended to discuss that.
Special permit in for battery storage, which is the dimensional regulation requirements to the town board, which is, which is unusual, um, that's why the applicant wouldn't do that. Mr. Chairman, can I just bring up one other thing? Want to understand the applicant's thinking, may now introduce a subdivision, uh, seek, with regard to seeker, it's going to need to be concluded for the public hearing, just, just how you, once you see the application, or how you anticipate the application to be performed with the different boards, the judge, the pack, seeker, public hearing.
Um, well, I guess that's one discussion too, because I saw in your memo, you mentioned maybe wanting to hold a joint hearing between the boards, which is fine with us. Um, so I think our plan to introduce it at least to the Z B A before that occurs aligns with that, if that's what the town.
Yeah, I, I think you can introduce it, I just, yeah, I know you're aggressively making assumptions, I just wanna make sure that you're going on the right path and that everything's kinda.
Right.
Kinda planned out, and the introduction of the subdivision application right now can kinda create some, I don't wanna see, for you, the board of public state, having to go back and forth between boards multiple times, at the public hearings, and things like that. So I think we could, so, so we start with the discussion from you as to where you see this going, and I think you may be discussing proceeding with how, how it's gonna work.
Right, okay.
I'm on board.
So, I, I just. The, obviously, these two new lots are gonna be set landlocked, so access is gonna be by easement, by right of way, by what?
Yeah, so it'll be easement, um, and it'll be along the existing driveway and aisles that are on the property.
So how are you gonna delineate those easements? Just, that, that's a very busy lot, uh, right now. And so how are you gonna delineate these so that those easements don't get blocked at any point in time?
So that, if, under the terms of our lease with the, uh, with the landowner, we have, um, the ability to set a non, a non-exclusive lea, uh, easement of, uh, for access purposes, which will be described, um, and really reported as a permanent easement.
I'm looking more at how's it gonna be walked underground, uh, because they, they, I've, I've been out to the site numerous times.
Right.
And it's just very busy, and, and vehicles are parked here, there, and anywhere.
Right.
At this point in time. Uh, obviously, in the future, we're gonna be a little more concerned that that not happen perhaps, particularly if we have to have fire access. Uh, so I'm just looking for you to figure out how you're gonna do that.
Well, we'll have to mark it, we'll have to, as you're saying, we'll have to flag it, and, and, uh, I mean, the, the area is now being used as a, the sort of a storage area, where there's those roads that go in between that. So that's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be important for us that there's access at all times, and we'll have to make sure, because it's an active business, that it's marked.
Yeah, right now, I think it's mostly gravel, which is mixed.
Yes.
Walking is, li- lining, it's gonna be pretty difficult.
Right.
The other thing is, right now, I think that, for whatever reason, and, and it's not your issue, but it's a property issue going forward, it looks like we have a building in that easement, or the setback, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, building in your setback.
In the back.
The salt.
Should, would, in the other application, I believe.
So it has a variance?
Actually, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just, I, I was, it's not indicating so.
Just building off of that question, since it is a busy lot, um, are you anticipating, like, pollards, or do you think that the pad itself is positioned such way, where it's unlikely to be hit by a, from, you know?
It's fenced in, so there won't have, there won't be any access from the actual existing operations that's on site now.
Uh, will be fenced in at, at the pad there, or it's gonna be fenced in at your public line?
It will be fenced in, I think this has been a little better. So the fence will be, actually, sorry, this will be the fence for the westerly lot, this will be the fence for the eastern lot. The access path currently, currently runs this way. Sorry, it's down, it's cut off, I tried to zoom in for you. So that fence is here around the property. So the internal access will be here, and then also here for the internal other operations.
Uh, Neil, just have an answer to your question. So on the previous site, most recently signed site plan, but, um, there was a note, uh, that said that the, uh, salt barn received variance of twenty-three feet, uh, from Z B A, equal twenty-third point nine.
Okay, I think we had it, we had it on this side, Paul.
Yeah, well, that, this is a problem we run into, um, or at least I find the kind of problem with town leadership. You allow multiple uses, right? Uh, and now keep a track of the bulk tables and things like that. So normally, the way we've done it in the past, whether you know it or not, is that you have the bulk table for the usage getting approved at that time, and you'll really make them address the previous setbacks or anything like that. The board wants to, going forward on all applications, do that and have multiple bulk tables, I mean, to do that, I just find that that usually kinda makes it kinda confusing, uh, particularly, you can see the example in this application.
Okay, in terms of, we're gonna have to adjust, I think, the way it's going forward today, it's gonna have to be adjusted some, because we're at least taking two of these lots, two of these new lots are gonna come out, and therefore the bulk table for the parent lot, or whatever you wanna call it, is gonna change.
Yeah, I, like you, tonight's the first night I've seen the subdivision plan, so yeah, there are some other items.
So then, then I think we also, then going forward, we have to have a bulk table for each of these new lots too.
Yeah.
Okay. So I have three new bulk tables.
Yeah.
Good enough. I'm confused, so I understand.
Making a new one.
So, so just as a, so you're aware, I have a general, well, um, I would like you, at some point, not necessarily tonight. We, the project site is over in principal, principal, I agree.
Hmm?
You're near a tributary of the wallkill. There's a fuel storage tank on site, there's an L P, uh, tank on site. Now we have, uh, two battery. There's a fuel storage tank on site, there's an LP, uh, tank on site, and now we have, uh, two battery, uh, constructs on site, and I'm concerned about contamination, uh, of the, uh, one-way and the aquifer. So, I would look to you folks to, uh, address that general concern. Comment over.
I guess the follow-up question would be, what would be sufficient for you to address that comment, since the?
Well, yeah, um, council board of the issue of PFAs.
Right, but you always ask for them not to use the cameras, so they don't run out.
Of course, it has contamination issues. And that is tangential, my, my comment is tangential, it's not just PFAs or PFOSs, it's all potential sources of contamination, and how they are contained to give the planning board comfort, that, uh, whatever we might approve, minimizing the risk of contamination. I really can't articulate it better than that, because I'm just learning about what this thing is.
For instance, if there was a fire, and you had to put out the fire, and you need these containers, or surrounding converters, all this information, all the components that are there, if it were to run on the ground, what's running, what are we losing?
Uh, Paul may be able to address that later on, in the presentation.
As far, as far as the fuel tanks, those are the property owner's fuel tanks.
Correct, they were.
You know, they should, he should have containment around them, we just thought, confirm that, but that's really his thing, you know, but it's on the parcel, so it just adds to the tension by having all these variables together.
So we'll do, we can double check, I know that there was a neg deck issued for the 2023 plans, and those were shown on the site plan, so, uh, as far as confirmation on what these are, I, I think the easiest thing to do is to see if they're W storage, W contained, but the LP, the LP tank, that's, that's just protected by, there's no regulation on that, that's just protected by the ballast. But we can, we can address, uh, specifically the concerns with the battery storage over, over the Principal Aquifer. That, as far as the fire suppression and actual, uh, deterrent, I'm gonna defer to, to the expert that we have here tonight to, to talk about, so.
Mr. Chairman, so I think the way that that's gonna play out, I know you asked for it in the future, is when you go through the seeker process, right? So just probably gonna be expanded R3, or?
Just in that.
EIS, or something like that, okay.
With respect to the space for future augmentation, is that something they have to come back to us?
You know, I, uh, I thought you were gonna ask this before, and you didn't, and I had, I had this thought today, when you, when you're talking about the equipment pad.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think so, and it ties into the, the capacity that you're allowing on the site, so if they wanted to increase to ten, let's say, then they would have to come back and, I mean.
Okay.
But, um, they need to tell you with that layout, if the five megawatts is represented by what they show, and if four, if it includes the future, or four, or what that is.
Is, is there a limit of five on each parcel?
Not you, there's no town limit.
No, I mean, as far as their design.
Yes.
So, would that be another subdivision, then theoretically, to create additional capacity?
I was thinking, yeah, well, when I saw the subdivision, that, that was not the point I, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, we did put the subdivision in to try to pull one over, we just wanna let you know that that was an option, that, that, a thing that was discussed at the last one, and then we're proceeding, and kind of give you, try for a crystal globe for the next, the next meeting.
I think the question more is though, now that they have the equipment pad layout, which shows future, uh, battery storage, is that a future to bring you up to five, or is that a future beyond five?
Sure.
No, I'm, augmentation, um, augmentation doesn't impact megawatts, so it'll, it's, it'll be five on day one, it'll be five when it ends. It helps top off the battery that you, that you lose over the amount of years, the energy capacity is what you end up losing, so as you've all experienced with your cell phone, after a couple of years, it's just not making it to the end of the day, the same thing is gonna happen with these over time, and so you bring in additional batteries, that do not increase the power capacity, but replenish the energy capacity that you, that's naturally integrated over the operation of the light, the, the operating of the battery the first couple of years.
These batteries that are in the containers, are they like, work in a drawer, like a drawer, where you slide it in, pull one out, if something goes wrong?
Sorta.
So couldn't you like, just pull out the ones that are fading out as far as their capacity, and just put new ones in, within the same confines that I showed?
Some augmentation plans draw it up that way, um, the reality of what we've seen over the past five or six years of doing this, is that we don't know if, when, I'm not confident that the shape of that thing seven years from now is gonna be the shape of the thing today, and that you're gonna have, be able to put it in the same spot. That's why we're leaving, you know, the technology's evolving really rapidly, things are getting very small very fast, and so we're leaving space outside of the container, saying, well, we'll hold the space for something that's today's size, but we really think it's gonna be smaller, and it'll probably just sit outside the container, rather than fitting into the same rack that it was in on day one.
But just, my understanding of what, how you answered my question, which was, if you want to bring in more equipment, that you would come back to us?
Unless they say that this is what we're asking for right now, please remove this as part of our application, as if they were gonna construct it on day one.
Yeah, I, I, I think, like, I don't know that any of us has any point of view about whether you have, you know, fifty megawatt hours on the pad, or seventy, like, I don't know that it makes much difference, but I think we would want to know today, what your expected, you know, capacity would be, that you want approval for, um, over time.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, I mean, if you're, if your plan today is to bring in more batteries, because your batteries are aging, like, I think, I think that that's something we should talk about.
Well, I think that's a good point, because if it, when it says future, that leads me to a possible segmentation issue. So I think we need to be careful, because then it's less high in the sky, wouldn't that be great, and it's more, we're actually planning for this, and so then we need to study this, to be ready for that.
So, Kelly, how would they avoid, if they're changing, or we're, or they're changing the types of batteries, would that not require them to come back?
Well, I, I can't really answer that, I mean, if they're changing the types of batteries, I feel like if it's the same level, they comply with everything else, I think that would just be something that would go through Frank. But if it's, it's hard for me to imagine if something, a battery's dying by half, that they're only gonna bring in a lesser battery that only is half. Like, I, I don't, again, don't understand why you wouldn't just take out this big monster battery, and not just put in this little dinky battery that's just gonna be just as powerful. So to leave a space on there, and maybe it's, you know, this is just what I'm imagining, but to then have a space on there that says, for future batteries, to me says, maybe they want, in the future, maybe this is gonna be the way everything goes, now they're already set up for it, now they just bring in a small little container, and there's another five megawatts, and we would never know about it, and while they should come to you for approval, we don't know about it. So if they want it now, now is the time to ask for it, so we just wanna make sure that if that is what they want, ask for it, if it's not, the plan should be accurate.
I think we're probably good saying that our, our intention is to install what we intend on day one, and to use everything marked as future, as a way to bring things back up to the day one capacity, not exceeded.
You might wanna change the wording, so that it's not that, and I'm sure Alec can come up with some great words, so that it is not something that leads everybody to think that you're trying to add additional uses.
And we, and we can beef up the notes to clearly identify that the applicant, the, the board, the town board, uh, the future buyer is aware of that, you know, I'll put it as note number one, uh, with some litigious language.
Not litigious.
No.
No, like, this is, this site plan, this site plan is for.
Legal, just legal, legalese, not litigious.
Land things?
I think what you've just explained for the last ten minutes, gets us past what we, we want, I don't know how you put that in it, it's not the most sensible way.
But yeah, I, I mean, I, but I think we've made our point, and I think that, yeah, like, you know where we're headed.
Yeah, it seems transparent and clear what you're asking guys to do.
And I think, yeah, you understand it, and you'll.
So that's fine. Yeah.
The, the contract you have with the present owners of property, I would assume that if they were to sell that property, it goes with whoever were to purchase it in the future?
They would assign the lease to them.
And you assign these, okay.
Yeah, to the buyer.
Sounds like lawyers.
We, we can do, uh, we can have, um, Paul Rogers do a quick safety conversation, which will actually inform the concern about runoff that came up before, and other things.
So you're gonna, I'm sorry, back to subdivision, you're gonna do the subdivision, but yet the owner's gonna own all three parcels?
That's correct.
Cool, okay, thank you.
Paul, we're all yours.
So I do, I don't wanna sidestep the procedure, but I do have paper copies of what he's going to talk to, uh, it was not officially submitted in the most recent submission, but if you guys would like a copy of it, so you can follow along, I'm welcome to go along, I'll.
Pass them over?
Sure.
Make sure that Grace gets a copy, and you.
Yes, I forwarded that.
Okay.
Did I forward it, or just, no, I, I just asked, yes, sorry, I will.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I can give you a PDF copy, but you have it for.
If you can, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's the chair and members of the board, um, so, um, I, I think you already gave my resume, and then for that, um, just a little bit more to add into it, uh, a lot of the codes that I'm gonna be going over today, I was involved with actually creating those codes, so I understand like, the depths, the deep depth knowledge of that code, and the intent of what the committee was trying to do, what the state has adopted, what the recommend, uh, the recommendations of the fire working group, uh, what we looked at, and why we looked at it, you're more than welcome to ask questions on any of that. I can tell you that my priority when we were doing it was to make sure that we had proper protection for the fire service, as a, a former firefighter, I, I really wanted to get some things in there for the fire service staff, which always needed, you know, my heart, and it was accepted by the Department of State, so it's in the second draft, and it looks like that's gonna get into the code itself, uh, and it is the first of its kind in the country, um, which, uh, I think that a lot of people are gonna start to follow suit with what, uh, what we did here in New York City, I mean, in New York State, uh, and believe it or not, I was involved with writing the city code, so some of that language in the city code was drafted up into the state code, because right now, um, New York City has been pretty good with, uh, not having any incidents as far as battery energy storage areas are concerned. You may have seen some of the, uh, consumer products that's added, that's, that's the Y of Y West, that is counterfeit batteries, there's a whole host of different things that are going on there, so, if you, if you just go to page one right here, I'll, I'll check you through it, and as I'm doing it, it will actually, uh, talk a little bit about the, the layers of safety right here, so.
I think I need you to speak louder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, could you speak up just a tiny bit?
Yeah, where, where's the mic, sorry.
Here, you can take this.
Okay, thank you, tell me if that's good. You good? Okay, great, um, so, uh, on page one here, right, uh, we're, we're just going over the, uh, the battery architecture, and how the BS is made up, and you can see we have these small little cells, right now, we're showing cylindrical cells, and then they build up into what we call a module, and then finally into a rack, and then on the right-hand side, you can see that we have the, the actual battery energy storage system itself, and, uh, Mr. Chair, as you said, uh, they are like a bigged rack, you can actually pull those things out if you need to, if you have a defective module, or something like that. Um, but each one of these things here, uh, they have their own performance criteria, and they get what they call a listing, a listing is something that is done by a national recognized testing laboratory, to show uh, that these, uh, these sys, these, uh, these components are, um, have passed these certain high, uh, performance tests, to make sure that they're good going into it, so these are tier one types of batteries that go into these cells, which, uh, into these, uh, battery energy storage systems.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
What's tier one?
Tier one is the best, that's, that's how they, yes, sorry, that's how they regulate, it's the best, for lack of a better term, it, it's, it's the best type of, uh, battery that's out there, it's the highest standard that's out there. Um, uh, one thing I don't have in here is this thing called a battery management system, so all of these things working together, they are, uh, they are regulated by this thing called a battery management system. It is also looked at as part of, uh, the listings of, not in the cell, but in the actual module listing itself, so you have a cell listing, a module listing, and then you finally get what they call a unit rack listing in that one, and, and the system as a whole has its own listing, uh, but they also have this battery management system, and this is the eyes and the ears and the brains of the actual system itself. So it's constantly looking at the state of health of the battery, amongst other things, but we look at it from the fire side, as to the state of health, and if there is something that is going haywire, maybe a voltage drop, or an overheating event, it will, it will, uh, shut down or isolate the particular area, in most cases, it was actually shut down, we send a ticket to the owner, and saying, hey, you got a problem. Their, their concern, and rightfully so, they are business, is performance, so if you have an issue, they wanna make sure that they can get that out there for performance, and we're seeing more and more of these battery management systems that are, uh, predictive, AI involved with it, so they can get the best performance out of it, if you're looking at performance, then guess what, we can reduce the risk of any type of event taking place, because they do wanna get the best performance. So any questions on that right there?
Is, is it sent out by wifi, I mean, but?
Yeah, yeah.
And how often would somebody actually be on site to physically inspect the?
So, yeah, right now, the code mandates that we have an annual inspection.
Annual.
An annual inspection, uh, for compliance of the code itself, and, uh, this is again, what we, uh, what we looked at in New York City, um, where we have to, uh, look at the, all the remote monitoring on a daily basis, to make sure that these things are up and operating safely, um, but there is a third party, is there a third party you have for your remote monitoring, oh, you haven't figured out who the, uh, who the?
Owner, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be, yeah, the owner or the third party is gonna be, uh, looking at these things, uh, as far as remote operations.
Recipient of a message.
I'm sorry?
A recipient of a message, that is a problem or a potential problem, are they, uh, reacting, aware, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five?
The, the answer is yes, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, that this thing is gonna be monitored, uh, if anyone does get an alert that there is something going on, because there's many of them out there. Um, usually, like, we've actually, uh, got online and looked at a couple of things that we were made aware of, and we just monitored it for the next hour, so to see if there's something going on, we also have the closed circuit TV that we can actually look at the, the site, so that was also baked into the new, uh, fire code that's gonna be coming out, so that each one of these sites will have closed circuit TV that people can.
Now you said the owner, are, are you building this and then turning it over to another company, is that the intent?
Yes, it's.
You're just constructing?
We will bring it to the point where we are, uh, just prior to a building permit, and likely, you know, through financing, bring in another owner who'll actually build it.
This has nothing to do with this particular project, but I know that Frank has problems when these things change hands, keeping track of who the contact person is.
Yeah.
That's a real problem, so we, we need to rest that going later on, but it has nothing to do with the batteries.
Sure, yeah, no, I'm glad you brought that out.
Yeah, I mean, there, there, at least I've been involved in, um, four projects, and go through the two side by sides, and if there are issues with contacts there, I'm very happy to provide those.
Check with Frank, because I know he's having a, I think he's having a problem right now.
Yeah, that was, that was been resolved, yes.
Okay.
There was a couple of days where it was an issue, yes.
Great.
With respect to the, uh, physical shut-off, the, on, on the plan, there's a, a physical shut-off, uh, who would use that, and does TAM have somebody that's trained on this, like, what, what's the point of the, the physical shut-off, uh, I assume it's so fire and safety related?
Yeah, some of the systems have the, the physical shut-off right on the, uh, the container itself, uh, some they have it just wired up, that is for the full system itself, where you can shut down the full system, so it all depends on the design, how they have moving forward, so I, I can't really answer the question, because I'm not, they, I haven't figured out which one you're gonna buy yet, Mike, do you have any clue on that?
It's gonna be one of the twenty-foot style containers that has a, that has a E stop on the outside, but e- everything that I've heard from, um, subject matter experts on fire safety, is that if you suspect that there's an issue within the container, no one should be getting close enough to push that button anyway, the disconnection should be done at the road, at the AC interconnection where Orange Rockland, Orange Rockland poles are, that yes, there's a big red button, but it's, no one should be going near it.
Yeah.
No one should go near that one, it's inside there, there should be one outside, essentially, outside the fence, I'm.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a lot of different places, you can disconnect the system, you can do it at the inverter, you can do it on the pole top switch that Orange Rockland owns, we have our own pole top switch, there's a lot of places to do it. We have our own pole top switch, there's a lot of places to do it.
But so I guess my fundamental safety question is, is there anybody on site? Because you're not on site, or the owner is not gonna be on site, but TAM guys will be on site doing their TAM things. Is, is some, somebody going to be responsible for pushing the outside button if it needs to be pushed?
No one at TAM.
Yes, so the code indirectly covers that in some ways. And again, this is what I'm talking about, the first in the country that did something like this as far as the state is concerned, where they do require that they have someone on the phone within 15 minutes to, to go over with the firefighters, to speak with them. There'll be signage out there that they can close, which will reach back number 24/7. It has to be monitored. And also, if the incident commander feels that they need those people on the scene, they, they do have a timeframe. They have to be there within four hours. And I say within four hours because they could be there within two hours, within an hour, depending on where they're actually at at a particular time. So, but the maximum number would be actually four hours. And again, there was a lot of pushback on that, but the state went through with that. And so that's gonna be in the code too.
So just to put five more on it. The person who's gonna be pushing the big red button outside the fence, maybe somebody from our fire department who's being given counsel, maybe remotely, maybe in person by the owner or the operator.
Yeah. Yeah, if I, I can give you an example, maybe go to, if, if there was an event that took place, a moment's guaranteeing the BMS has already shut that thing down. We monitor some systems, we can, we can already tell from my house or wherever we are monitoring that the system's already shut down. So if the phone call came into us, we can confirm to them the system is shut off. The energy hasn't been released, it's isolated, but the system is shut down, so it's not having any energy going back and forth. Generally, that's gonna be done way before there's even a ticket sent out to, to anyone else to know that the, the system could be in distress.
If there, for some reason, again, I'm not sure how this exactly works, if there was a fire within the container, there's air in the container, there's probably fresh air to keep cooling the batteries, which would help keep a fire going by having that oxygen. Is there anything that would evacuate it or anything like that that would suck out the air, maybe help put out a fire, is there anything like that?
Yeah, so there's a couple ways to answer that, there's a lot to unpack, believe it or not, in that statement.
All of these systems would have exhaust venting.
Sixty-nine system.
Exhaust venting.
Yeah, yeah, so what he's saying is that in the event that there was something that came out of cell, maybe a smoke signature or something like that, doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna go on fire. They will actually start to pull the gases out through a fan, and that fan is operated based on either a smoke detector or some gas detector, recognizing that there is something that's been released inside the, inside the container itself. So it will actually pull that out. That is a compliance document that's inside the fire code that they have to comply to. So they will be having the fans, which is an NFPA sixty-nine system, which means that there is a lot of bells and whistles to be complying to that too, and I'm not gonna get into the deep depths of that. But they have to, they have to have that. And all of these things that I talk about with the battery energy storage system, it all is tested and reviewed by a national recognized testing laboratory to make sure, so their credibility is on the line on that too.
So which national, which testing facility?
Depends on which one the manufacturer want, the UL is one of them, Intertech is another one. You have CSA, so you have a couple of different national recognized testing laboratories that will do it. But they usually follow a UL standard, so it is a UL standard, and then they take that standard and they test it to that particular standard in the national recognized testing laboratory.
At some point in the future, I would love to, we talk about monitoring, and we talked at least two different ways, one electronic or whatever, and the other one was by TV or whatever. I would love to know the list of all the monitoring and what to monitor. Because I'm sure you're doing two or three or four different ways of things you're monitoring for it. I just would love to know what they are at some point.
Yeah, and for clarification, one is for the battery itself, the other one is for security, you know, and, and the closed circuit TV, just get for the grounds and things of that sort. But there also can be double if the fire department were to show up, you can actually see that, we've used that on a couple of occasions, when there was a, an accidental trip of a fire alarm, the fire department shut up and they didn't know what to do. And we gave them the confirmation to say, hey, we're not seeing anything on the battery management system, everything is looking good. We don't see any smoke, you don't see any smoke, we're gonna reset the alarm and you guys go on your way, and we'll continue to monitor the system. So this way, it gets them back into service and back to where they need to be instead of standing around wondering what's going on inside the box. If you take a look at the container, this is just a, what a basic container is. And the nice thing about these containers is that we have numerous containers right throughout, and there'll be separation distances. So if there was an arrhythmia, if there were to be a fire that took place, the heat from that, that container should not transfer to the other ones. And that has to be tested through a large scale fire testing, which we're gonna get to.
So what is the separation distance?
It's all based on the next thing that I'm gonna get over into. Sorry.
No, 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 okay.
Good question. All right, so, no, 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 it's a good question. So I'm really just kinda giving you an idea of the regulatory infrastructure that's involved here, and it has to do with UL, with NFPA, with the international fire code. So the NFPA and the international fire code make up model laws. Those model laws are adopted by the state, and then the state actually will put their two cents into it. So they modify it in some ways a little bit, some adopt them as is. But right now, the state is on the 2021, and we know that the recommendations that are coming out, and that's on my next slide. They have now even surpassed NFPA eight fifty-five, which is, everyone considers that the gold standard. So the state, the state regulatory body for the fire code is above and beyond with the NFPA, which is the National Fire Detection Association, which is a standard development organization that looks at fire and life safety. And they have many codes and standards out there addressing that. The other thing I get into a little bit, and I talked about this, is the listings, right, which is a performance test. You can see that any, any box or any energy storage system that comes into New York regardless, has to have a UL listing of ninety-five forty. There's sub-listings inside of it, and I kinda went into that with the cells and things of that. And then, and then finally, the last one down there, it says a large scale fire testing, and this, this was the game changer. When we were first building out the code, we weren't exactly sure what results we would get for a failure of a battery. So what the committee did is they, they made people basically destroy their systems. Usually, when you do testing, what you do is you take a small sample, you get some data, and then you extrapolate the data, and you can try to use it on, you know, on a larger scale. Well, the committee didn't feel even comfortable with that, they, they basically said, hey, take your, your, your full container, fail it, and tell us the results. So any container that comes into the state of New York has to, has to go through that rigorous testing. And there's a lot of data that is collected as a result of it, what happens to do, happens to be with heat release rate, which you talked about, which drives your separation distances. So that heat release rate data will actually give you the, the distance that it recommended to be. The code says three feet, we see some that are eight feet, we see some that are actually six inches apart. And they can do that if they perform the test, and they can prove that even if this thing were to go on fire, it's not going to transfer to the one behind it to the sides. So, so that's where this, this data performed test, you can use and leverage it if you wanna have closer separation distances. In a place like New York City, where you don't have a lot of space, that is key to try to reduce that separation distance. So there's, there's a lot more people that are doing that.
So each container has a different separation or whatever.
They'll have different results from the, from the testing that is gonna be performed.
And then the whole thing is tested as a unit?
Whole thing is tested as a unit, so that big container that you saw in the previous, that, that whole thing would basically be the, the large scale fire testing. They would, they'd destroy that, right, and then they would.
So like, somebody like, a testing agency would come back and say, look, if you use this cell, this battery, this rack, and this inverter, and this, and this box, that would work? Because sometimes, I know with smaller stuff like UL, I understand UL on a, on a household level.
Yeah.
Because if you take each unit, but do a unit, it doesn't necessarily work as a, as a complete unit. And I'm assuming that this is tested as a complete unit?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's exactly what this does. It, it does, everything has to be inside the box that was listed, from the cell, the module, into the racks. And also the inverter, which I didn't put in it, the inverter, so it's gotta match up with the inverter. So it's been tested with that too, and that's all part of that UL ninety-five forty listing itself. It, it's kind of a deep stuff, so was everyone understanding? Am I losing you all, or, well, good? Good. All right. My, my next one is really just getting into the New York State recommendations, just giving you a general idea on what we have on some of these things. The fire notifications, making sure, again, notifying the fire department with a fire alarm system, where at one point, they, they didn't think that the boxes, they considered cabinets at this particular time. They didn't think the cabinets needed any type of fire alarm system associated with, because it wasn't considered a building. Since it wasn't considered a building, they weren't requiring to have any type of fire alarms. Today, New York State said, no, we're so that hadn't required fire alarms, so this way the fire department could be noticed and notified in, you know, in a very good time. The constant monitoring of the battery management system, right, and they call it a ROCK sometimes, Remote Operating Center, where these things are constantly monitored. The fire department has to be, some, they have signage up to make sure the fire department can read someone in within a fifteen minutes. They say immediately, in the code, immediately could be up to fifteen minutes, so.
Does a building manager on the slip, does it have to go through any kind of seismic?
Yes, that's in fire code. Great question. Yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's always been in there, but, so it's not any added, but that's in the fire code already. Closed circuit TV is something they're gonna be adding in, we talked about the fire alarm system. Annual training for the fire service, based on whether the chief wants that annual training, they can make a phone call, but it's already, it's gonna be offered to them every year, because they'll have new people that come into the, to the fire department. So that annual training will be there for them. And, and the big one that we saw here is peer review, is to, to make sure that these systems have another set of eyes. At one time, it was, well, it was available for the code official if they wanted it, but when we started doing a review of all the systems that were in New York State, we noticed that there was a lot of, not intentional, but not code officials that didn't understand it. So we, we wanted to give them help, and it was a choice that they could ask for it, and not many people used that choice. Now we mandated it. Now, now it has to be done. So they're gonna be looking at it along with the, the code official. But the final say comes from the code official, not from the peer review. So there is a, there is a peer review, and they'll work hopefully pretty well with the code officials. Inspections during the life of the actual system itself, we also noticed that some of the systems were not getting any eyes on, on an annual basis. So these inspections now are gonna be putting, are gonna be made sure that people are out there looking at.
Before you go forward.
Sure.
The central station.
Sure.
Is that, that has some kind of standards too?
It does, yes. It's part of an NFPA seventy-two standard.
Okay, so that, that, that would be verified also?
Yeah, that's a, yeah, that's a, it's, it's part of the standard, and if they have to comply with the standard, they have to comply with what's inside the standard.
So if in, in the future, if somebody decides they're gonna go to a different central station, that would be sent on to the building department first?
Yeah, that would, if they're gonna go from one monitoring company to another monitoring company, yeah, that has to go through. They have to be compliant to that. So any changes in, in the actual initial setup should be reviewed by a code official to make sure that they're staying compliant with the code itself.
So with each of the monitoring systems, is there redundancy built in so that you know that they're actually working?
Yeah, yeah, good question. There is redundancy, similar to what we see with the, the fire alarm, where there's, there's two, two legs of communication, so if one fails, we get trouble signal, both fails, we get an alarm. So, and, and that would cause someone actually coming out and take a look, maybe even forming a fire watch. Same with the remote operating, if it's not coming back on, they have the, they have the ability to remotely to shut these things down. And if it's not picking up, depending on how long they're not picking up on things, this thing should be shut down.
FDMY has a, has a great department on all that. And my question really goes to the training of the local fire department. What's a good level of training for the fire department to have for the, for this use? Is it good, okay, we have ten percent of the guys trained, twenty percent? There must be some kind of standard, what makes sense?
Yeah, we, we would like to try to capture as many as possible, even in the surrounding areas, not just the actual first duty units. So it would be open for police department if they wanted to come, or we am, I, I'll bring anyone who's gonna be part of the emergency response infrastructure. They're more than welcome to come to any of the training that's gonna be provided. If you, if you wanna come, you're more than welcome to come.
Yeah, I can hear it. No, but I just, you know, it makes sense that if the local fire department has twenty-five percent of the men trained, and like, you have somebody showing up who has some knowledge, is, is pretty good.
Yeah.
If I have two guys out of the whole department without the training, I don't want it there.
Yeah, yeah, and, and maybe there's a way that we can, you know, maybe honor, if there is something where the chief's like, well, I got two guys, everyone has seen this already, and maybe there's numerous already, we saw a lot of these things, hey, can you just maybe do something remotely? But that will be between the chief and them, and, and that, as far as I'm concerned, would be the chief has given a write-off to them, saying, no, this is part of our annual training, just make sure you, you, you go with these two people, and as long as you're on. And that's interpretation of the actual code itself, doesn't say you physically have to be there, so we may be able to do something remote on that end.
Just to add on that, we, as was mentioned, we've reached out to Chief Cam, Cam Booty. So as my understanding, there's three fire services that cover Goshen, so he suggested, well, we'd have first an initial meeting with Paul to talk about these kinds of things, like what's the level of training that, that you would be interested in. And also to look and see if the equipment that the fire department has is sufficient. So it'll be, and we'll be more of an informal conversation, Q and A, but that'll lead to what will be the formal training routine.
If there was a fire, do they put it out before phone?
So yeah, rare event, I'm, I'm not gonna lie, we, we're just looking at, we're just talking about statistics. We were all at a battery energy storage conference up in Albany this particular week, and just talking about the amount of incidents coming out. Come, have been significantly reduced as a result of the, the number that had actually started to be installed. So it's, it's almost down to, well, can't be zero, because we had some, but it is extremely, extremely low. So let's use the scenario that you do have a catastrophic event. And if there was a catastrophic event that took place, the, the fire department is really gonna be taking the defensive stance. We like to train the incident commander to manage the incident, which means that if they think that they need water, they can. But we recommend that they allow it to consume itself, and if there's any, yeah, and burn itself out. But what you're doing is you're getting rid of the energy in that case, to, to, to remove the energy, similar to like a propane tank, right? If you cannot shut down a valve, and the system is on fire, you just continue to let it remove its content, so you get rid of all the energy. Because if you do put the fire out, now you have all this propane, which is heavier than air going down there. And that becomes more of a problem, because it seeps into people's basements, and then sure enough, it finds an ignition or some kind of explosion. So, so it, it's under that similar concept.
These are all lithium batteries?
These are lithium ion batteries, yeah. That's what they're, they're. Next, just a site specific, ERP will work with the, the code official and the fire department to make sure that everything is in place on their end, and anything that we put down there that they agree to, so that should be reviewed by the chief. We'll make sure that he or she understands what we're, we're trying to accomplish at that particular point.
So you said something before about possibly having to have special equipment or special whatever at the fire department? What are those things?
Yeah, well, you know, in, in New York City, there's really nothing that they need more than just a hose, if they have a thermal imaging camera that works. If they wanna actually monitor the air, they can monitor the air with a, what they call a fire gas meter, which is a rudimentary thing that they use in confined space operations. But they can get some of that stuff. But yeah, that, that's what I would be looking for if they wanted that. But most of the times, in the fire companies that I talk to in this particular area of Orange and Rockland, they are saying, well, we'll just call them a hazmat unit if we're going to do any of that monitoring. Because they have a lot of sophisticated equipment, so that's entirely up to them.
Sure, what are you gonna do about water though? How much, how much water do you think you need to have?
Yeah, I think that we were discussing that, we had a, a tank, we're, we're looking at the numbers for how much water is gonna be need. Again, we, we would rather, water works as a double actuator, believe it or not. We have seen fires where water actually put the, the system that was done on fire on fire. So this is why we, we say, you know, make sure that you're using it properly. If you're putting it on, you, you could be prolonging the event if it is on fire, not allowing it to consume itself. You're cooling it down and stopping the release of the energy as a result of the cooling it down. So we, but we always have water there for the fire service, there'll be some of their own water, I think about five hundred, a thousand gallons, and they even have tanks. But we'll have some sort of water infrastructure there for them, and we don't have that number yet on how much. Do we, do we decide how much we're gonna put there?
What about chemicals?
No, there, there, there's nothing that I'm aware of, and not, not even in the committee that we're aware, that actually will work out in the water. As a matter of fact, you know, we, you know, not that I'm here to sell anyone's product, as a matter of fact, I don't endorse any products at all. We did some testing when I was with the New York City Fire Department, we felt that water was. Uh, we did some testing when I was with the New York City Fire Department. We felt that water was the best. Even when we added other, uh, chemicals that they said that were going to be working better, wetting agents or phones or anything like that. Uh, it didn't work as good as we wanted. It was simple. Water was simple. So we just kept, uh, no deductors that have to be done in order to proportionate and things like that. So we just kept it.
And I think the conversation, I think before it was said that you, you have fans on it. And so obviously you're not trying to contain whatever's burning within the container. You're, you're getting, pulling out the smoke or whatever is included in that.
That, that, that is correct. Yes. Yeah, pulling it. That's it. That's a requirement. Again, that's a, a code requirement. They have to have that in there. So, um.
So if, if these individual cabinets essentially.
Sure.
Are maybe one point something megawatt hours each? Like what would you, I, I think we're all envisioning the whole thing going up, which seems incredibly unlikely. Like what, um, what would be, I'm trying to sort of contextualize this relative to a car. Which, you know, maybe it's what, like eighty, ninety kilowatt hours? Like, like what would you expect to be, you wouldn't expect anything to be on fire. But, but how, um, how small would it likely be contained in the event that sort of one, I don't know, cabinet door, um, went up?
So, well, we'll, we'll call like one section a, a rack.
Okay.
Right, let's, let's call, well, we'll leave them getting down to the module. And, and usually when they're doing these large scale fire testing, uh, they have to, to prove, uh, that they, they can stop the spread. And in most cases, they're starting it right in the module itself. And we're seeing such great results right now with that where it's not even leaving the module. But, you know, we want to just say, well, we've seen things that actually had left the module. We want to be very clear to say if the full system would have gone on fire. But right now with the testing that they perform, it's staying right within the module.
And, and how large is module?
Um, it depends on the system itself, depends on the format of the, uh, cells they're using. So there's a, there's a couple of different variables. There's no standardization in the, in the industry on how big the module could be. You, do you want to answer that much?
Yeah, I mean, the ones we're looking at are sort of, it's tough to get a full impression of a kind of small fucking table size. Um, and, uh, I mean, probably a little narrower than that, but the same depth.
I, I, I really, because I, 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 I think that there, I think we should be prepared for the largest fire that, you know, could happen. But I think, you know, a lot of us have experience in my own home. I have a, I have a firewall system slapped on my house. Like, um, I think we're all comfortable with batteries on some level. I, I'm trying to get a sense of, like, in the real world, if there is a fire within a module, like what does that look like relative to our car? Um, are they similar sizes?
It's, yeah, I mean, it, we haven't, I don't think we've seen consistently in the failure data that fires are coalescing around one size. You know, we've seen half a rack go up and then we've seen, um, I think in Warwick, it was, uh, a rack and half of the rack next to it. Um, and, and then, you know, there's a much larger, uh, uh, fire in California that was not within a container. It was in an old gas turbine building. Um, and so the, you know, the design and installation of the product matters a lot. Um, you know, I, I, the vast majority of projects of, of failure that, that there have been have been relatively small. Like, I don't think we've ever, have we seen a fire spread from one container to another container?
Yeah. Yeah, that was, uh, not too far from here.
Jefferson.
Yeah, Jefferson, Jefferson.
Jefferson.
Yeah, all the way up. Um, but there's, there's a lot to be, they, they haven't come out with a root cause analysis some time ago. I'm not sure. Yeah, no, but, and we, we weren't even sure if it was something that caused all four of them to go on fire simultaneously. Uh, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of work needs to be done. And we don't even know if it was the batteries that caused the fire. But in any, I, I, I don't, I don't know. So, um, but, um, just to kind of add on, uh, to what Mike said, let, let's use the scenario that the whole system goes on fire. Let's say that the whole thing goes on fire. Um, the, the ultimate goal is just to make sure that it stays within the box, right? And, and keeping that, uh, managed in that particular area where it doesn't leave the box and stays, stays there in the box.
I, 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 I appreciate us talking about worst case scenario.
Sure.
I'm trying to, to help you, uh, help us identify what is a likely and probable scenario.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but if this is the way we have to talk about it, that's fine.
Well, there's too many variables to actually give you something that's likely. Um, we can go by data, uh, um, where, uh, some people are, are going above beyond what the, the actual code calls for. And they're, they're burning their full boxes because they want to see, they want to get their own data. So, uh, they're, they're doing it intentionally to set it on fire, uh, going above what we consider a reasonable worst case scenario. Uh, so, and that's how they usually test it to a, a reasonable worst case scenario. Uh, but in some cases they're, you know, they're, they're destroying, completely destroying it to, to see that this thing goes on fire.
Could it get hot enough to melt the shroud, in case of?
Um. I, I, I've seen, I've been to a couple of these things. I, I've seen them buckle. Um, but I haven't seen them melted.
Jefferson, but, but one in Jefferson County, uh, at least the roof on two of the containers burned through.
They burned through the roof on that? Yeah, I, I've seen some video on that. Yeah. Um, yeah. Uh, I, I, did they buckle too? I'm trying to think of that.
I couldn't tell something.
But there was one door blown, blown open, um, as a result of an off flash. If you, well, that video, if you want, I can show it to you later on. Um, but.
I was trying to get, just to, just to try to, because the perspective that you're asking for is, what is the, um, what is the size of a module roughly? If, if you said they're unlikely to spread beyond a module, what would be in roughly?
Well, I, I think Mike, he's trying to.
You know, say most of the twenty-four container modules are like the size of a folding table.
Yeah.
So then, if, so the, if the, if the technology has evolved to the point where, you know, it's un, it's unlikely to spread beyond the module, then, then if the module were to catch on fire, it would be roughly the surface area of the size of a, of a table. Of that table area.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I'm trying.
It's great to bring us back on track. Let's take back on track.
Wait, let's, let's go, let's, Warwick, you said only was a module and a half or something? Uh, we're trying to understand this. And Warwick, I think you, somebody just said it was a module and a half that burned. But it had burned for seven, seven days.
That was the, uh, yeah, the, the one that he's mentioning is the one that was at the school. It was one like directly behind the school, uh, there. Uh, the other ones, we did see where it actually went down to full roll. Right, we saw that. And, um, you know, there, there was a, there's more to that story on why that happened. Um, it could have been some basic fire protection, uh, things that were left out. Um, so, uh, and that was, it may have been as a result of the installation. But the root cause analysis is not completely out there and, uh.
Was that a completed installation or was it still in the process? Do you know?
Um, I, I believe it was just completed. I think they were either going through the commissioning stage, uh, at that particular time. Who's doing commissioning, right?
That's what I heard. I don't have any inside info, but that's, I think what was publicly available.
Yeah, so, um, believe it or not, I think they're, uh, they're either back online or ready to go back online. Yeah, uh, our group is going to be out there for an inspection, uh, next week. So, uh, it's probably safe, so.
But the, uh, the peer review is a way to guarantee that what's being installed is what's actually being presented. You know, is that the design certifications and all that have to have this third party peer review so that what gets put in? And that was not in existence for?
It, 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 it was in existence, but no one ever used it. No one ever used it. Um, and, uh, because it was, uh, it, it was a line in that said, in the opinion of the authority having jurisdiction, if they want to use it, they can. Now it's like, well, now you have a choice. Now you have to use it. So. And then finally, we just want to make sure that everything is validated, right? That's the big thing that we look at, at. All these things that we're telling you that work, that they validated, that they should work. We're telling you that we can remotely shut it down. It's up to us to show the, the code official that, hey, we just performed a remote shut off on these things. Or if the E-stop is going to shut things down, we're going to actually, uh, show the, uh, the, the code officials, uh, during the inspection phase, uh, to, to make sure everything that we tell them is going to work is going to actually work.
Do you have a peer review? Do you have a, a third party inspector too? Because I don't think, I don't know anything about the inspector. He's, I don't, I'm just looking at Frank as me.
If I could, just for the board's information, because there's a little inside baseball going on here. Uh, the building code is going to be updated. And some of these things are, are going to be new, I'm sure, to Frank and everybody else involved. You may have some more information on this than most people. Uh, but I just want you to be aware that the current fire code, and that's why some of these things are saying that they're going to come out because the code is going to be updated. So just.
That's the state.
The New York State Building.
Yeah, that was my question for you, Paul. I'm proud to be the inspector. So as you said, I think I heard you say at the beginning of the presentation, you're working with the Codes Bureau. There's a second draft.
Yes.
The hopes are that this is going to all be implemented in the twenty twenty-five fire code?
That is correct.
But we don't know the date of that, when it's going to be sent out.
Um, the rumor is, things change. I'm just telling you a rumor. The, the rumor is, um, are they going to be voting on it in July? Uh, and then, uh, they'll have everything collated after that. Uh, but there's a process, as you know.
Right, my point is this, so if the project is moving along very aggressively and, and going in the right direction.
Yeah.
There's going to be a permit application submitted.
Sure.
I think the goal is you want to hit twenty twenty-five fire code.
Yes.
And, and, and I, I don't know, if there's any money associated with their project from NYSARDA, they have to use this.
Yes, that was going to make that point. So NYSARDA is already integrating these recommendations into the, the requirement to get access to the megawatt box that's being released in the coming days, actually.
Okay.
So that, so, yeah, there's even prior to the adoption.
Right, I just want to present all that so we have an understanding of where we are.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, appreciate that. Yeah.
Another question on, on Jefferson County. Uh, they went from, it went, I was, I, from what I heard, whatever, it started in one module and it ended up, uh, taking on all four modules. Was that because it was too close? Should there be a better separation? Firewall or whatever?
Just my observations. I don't have any information on it. Uh, the information has not been available. Uh, we've done a couple of root cause analysis, but this information has not been available. My observation is there was something else going on, uh, besides that. Uh, I don't believe that the, it was heat that caused them to, I, I believe the separation distance was fine. Uh, but, well, once we go and we look at the, the battery management system, well known.
That's what, that's what I heard, but it, it didn't seem to burn through from one to the other. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, you, you observed that too. Yeah, okay, good.
If, if I can make a, not a now request, but just sort of as we go through this. If you have other projects, either you worked on or you're familiar with, that have like ten megawatts in what is honestly a pretty busy, uh, commercial industrial facility? Like, I think it'd be helpful for us just to hear about those. Uh, and to the extent that there's anything you've learned that you can bring to ours. I, I, I do have this concern that TAM is busy and this is right there. And it's a lot of power. So as we move through this, if you could be thoughtful, uh, bringing us, uh, a good example.
So, yeah, and, and I think.
We can talk about that.
I, I, I would think New Leaf wants, every, they, they, they don't want to see any industry, uh, any, anyone ruin the industry, right? So if there's a fire, they defect some too. So they want to make sure that everyone is, is planning on the same deck of cards.
We can provide, um, sort of a, like a little data sheet on, on some of the other ones, like in New York City where we, that are operational. In Westchester.
Yeah, we got three in Westchester. Um, two of them are at sites that are pretty similar where they've got other activities on site. We do do bollards at those ones, um, to the extent that that's helpful there, just because they have sort of parking, stuff like that in addition to the fence. So, um, but, yeah, we can give you the address of those, give you some pictures, a little bit of that awesome.
That'd be good.
Was there anything else, Mike, you wanted to add to it? Paul's?
I do have Paul's the best. I couldn't.
So our, our intention would be to have Paul's hearing now, Paul available. Maybe we can, Mike can come from Massachusetts, we'll see. But, um, in any event, I appreciate the, the Q and A. And this is a, kind of a presentation to the planning board about it. Um, there was a question about storm, about the aquifer. So, uh, I'm wondering about the best way to address that concern. Mr. Drop, if you'd have brought up that, that question.
In the, uh, in the EAF?
Yeah.
Or in the environmental workstation? I think that's the best one, right?
Got it.
That, that concern was raised probably from the part one.
And you mentioned secret. I'm interested. Yeah. Okay.
So one of the things people, including us, are worried about is what, what's being upgassed during a fire or something like that?
Yeah, there's a, uh, there's a, uh, a sheet, a data sheet that just came out from American Clean Power, done, um, in conjunction with another fire safety, uh, called Fire Risk Alliance. And they summarize some of the incidents that have taken place. And, uh, they have put on paper that the, the product's combustion are similar to what we see in structural fires. So what we, what we see in structural fires is going to be similar. So it's not going to be anything exotic, right? Um, so, you know, uh, if this thing were to actually fail.
I had heard that hydrogen is a risk.
Um, in, in the cell, uh, before it actually burns. Yes. So going back to large scale fire testing, they start off with just a, uh, they start off and they do thresholds, right? They start with a cell, they actually puncture the cell, they grab the gases that come off that. And then they break it down into its constituents from the smoke itself. And that's where we're seeing the hydrogen that comes out of that. So, yeah, there is a component of hydrogen inside the, uh, the vaporized electrolyte that's being heated up.
I believe I read in one of your documents that the cooling system has to be cooled to the point of three degrees Celsius. Something in that area. What would happen if the AC, uh, stopped cooling? Stopped operating properly without whole system shutdown?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If, if, if that's something that the BMS would monitor itself, that's temperature control. So if they see something's getting hot, it will turn on the AC. If it sees something getting cold, believe it or not, it will actually heat these things up to make sure they're optimally working with performance for worse both ways.
And since my air conditioner never breaks, what happens? Well, no, seriously, what happens if your air conditioner doesn't break or doesn't work? Uh, does that cause a problem with the?
So, yeah, so, yeah, and that's a, a safety feature, right? The, the mini mask would recognize that, hey, we, we, we're getting some heat. We're not getting any cooling system working here. It would shut it down and isolate the batteries. Uh, similar to when you, you plug your phone in and you ever plug your phone in and you feel the back of it, sure enough, you feel it hot. But once you take out the charging of it, it starts to cool down. And, and that's the same concept they use here where we don't discharge and we don't charge. We don't move anything. So the movement of the energy actually causes the heat.
Any other questions?
Right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming on my ignorance.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
That is, actually, you can't do anything on this project. I was going to say, that's all you can do. You just can't do it.
Thank you.
Nope, no, no, no. Thank you.
So, uh, next agenda, uh, do you have any?
What is listed on your agenda is the commercial, uh, the short for rental law. However, that was not referred, so you will not be reviewing that.
Received it today and I just submitted it out before the meeting, so.
So we're not reviewing it tonight.
So your next agenda, in addition to that local law, you have authentic anti-lumber. They're coming back. Uh, they're essentially coming back from the same pool that was branded, I think, in twenty nineteen that expired in twenty twenty-one. Uh, that, that will be finalized as the site plan was proposed. Uh, and then quick way imports come back from end in site plan. And then you received something today from Golden State that I wanted to talk to you about. Um, you received a bunch of visual analysis, fusion analysis. They're, I checked with their consulting engineer. They're looking to come back for you to identify the damage points to be studied. Golden State. Uh, somewhat of a problem with that, I just want to think about it, is there's leaves on the trees now. So, uh, this is about several months too late, right, that, where they're going to have to just wait, so.
One of those special phones.
Yes. Oh, there you go.
Just a recent. Those four letters.
As a matter of fact, I will talk to their, uh, Golden State consultant a little bit more. Uh, because maybe my ears that they can't do the study for another four months, then we want to wait a little while.
Anything else from the board? Not, I have a motion then to close the meeting.
So there's a motion.
Eric, second by Phil, or Phil, you say, I? Against?